No one got in touch with me to get on to the meeting.
No one, very good, okay. Everybody have a chance to look at the minutes of our previous meeting of September 9?
Yes.
October?
Yeah.
Any additions, corrections?
I see.
Entertainer motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Thanks, John. All in favor?
Hi.
Very good. How about the bills? We got two months of bills?
Two months of bills. The big ones were.
Your travel.
The Erie Conference for Greenways and Mary Liz's and my attendance at PPA in Pittsburgh.
Good.
You'll have to tell us how that went later, Steve and Mary Liz.
Anybody have any questions on any of the bills? Two months now. There ain't none. Entertainer motion to approve, uh, two months of bills?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Cindy. Second?
I'll second it.
Thanks. Very good, Tony. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Very good. Approved. Communications, if you would highlight, please?
Uh, well, in October, you saw there was 29 and they were all LSA letters with the exception of one for broadband service. Uh, and November, there's only two and they're both for multimodal projects with PennDOT. And Mary Liz and I expect to get a lot more multimodals in because the deadline for them is tomorrow.
Ah, yeah, they wait last minute.
Yeah.
They sent one out this morning.
Anybody have any questions on any of the communications? There ain't none. Let's move on to all business.
Uh, motion, parent.
Oh, motion to approve our communications?
So moved.
Thanks, Rose. Second?
I'll second.
Oh, thank you, Cindy. All over.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Communications are approved. All business, transportation.
Okay, as I mentioned earlier, we've been involved with the Fall Planning Partners Conference with PennDOT. Um, they decided this year, rather than doing it in person over two days, they did four days virtually. Um, and this morning was the last session. We've had a number of meetings. PennDOT started a new procedure with the Transportation Set Aside Program, the multimodal program. Before an applicant, they have to do a preliminary application. When they do the preliminary, PennDOT looks it over to make sure that it's a qualified project. If it's qualified, it meets the parameters, then they have to meet with the representative of the MPO along with uh, the district's set aside coordinator. So we had meetings with Dixon City for their Main Street project, Heritage Valley for another project in Dixon, and Jessup Borough for a project on Hill Street. Uh, so I met with them on behalf of Lackawanna County. Um, Chris Chapman met with the applicants in Luzerne County, I believe there were five. Um, so what was involved was going over the applications, looking at them to see whether or not they met the priorities or the criteria for the region, and also if there were any um, areas that needed to be further explored or that were incorrect. Um, for instance, the Jessup application mentioned that there was no uh, public utility involvement and actually they crossed the Hill Street rail crossing, which not only is utility, but it's got to go through the PUC for a crossing permit. Um, so that was one of the things that they needed to do. There was a couple other things in uh, Dixon with stormwater and things like that. So we made those uh, notations and the applications were revised before they were finally submitted. Uh, we had our technical coordinating committee meetings of the MPO. And at the meetings, we formalized the memorandum for the five MPOs to undertake the freight study. And we've had some subsequent meetings with that to prepare the RFP. Lee High Planning, Lee High Valley Planning is going to take the lead on that. Becky Bradley is going to do that. Um, and there's a statewide um, process for applications now for proposals. That's relatively new, but DCED, PennDOT, and some of the other state agencies have accepted it. Um, so we're going to go through that portal and it's kind of unique because the RFQ, RFP goes out. Anybody making application makes it directly to that portal and nobody can access it until the deadline. Um, so there's no grants floating around that people can look at ahead of time. So all five MPOs will get it at the same time. And then we'll have a coordinating meeting uh, to review them probably in December. And January timeframe, uh, the study will start. Um, we also have started meeting again with the district. Mary Liz and I met with the district long Luzerne County uh, on highway occupancy permits. We actually did this before the pandemic. We had uh, I don't know, Mary, what, five, four or five meetings before the pandemic?
It was like quarterly almost, yeah.
So uh, we had started the process and um, the people from PennDOT District Four invited NEPA to sit in at our meeting because they want to implement it in the NEPA region and also in District Five. So we're kind of setting the model for the state and doing HOP reviews. Um, one of the things that came out of it that kind of shocked me a little bit and has an importance with our freight study. Luzerne County in Hazelton off of 924 has a proposal for somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 million square feet of warehousing space. One of the proposals is for a 4 million square foot building.
Wow. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a tenant that's looking at that or?
Nope, they're all specs.
Oh, wow.
Uh, it's over a 10-year timeframe that they're looking at doing it, but it falls into what's looking, uh, what's being done with the Hazelton Beltway project with 924. So even before the project's built, there's 10 million square feet being proposed.
Wow.
Um, just to give you a, an idea, if anybody's familiar with the Chewy Building in Jessup that was just built, that's a little over 1 million square feet.
Wow.
So the new building in Hazelton would be four times that.
Wow.
Uh, that's basically it on, on transportation. Mary Liz, you want to update on Sapa?
Um, yes, yes. Um, we're, we're in the uh, holding pattern over the airport right now with, with Scranton and Dunmore. Um, I have not heard anything from Scranton. We've asked them several times to give us an update and they have not responded. Dunmore is booting the, or punting the ball to Scranton, saying they're not going to pass anything until Scranton does. Um, however, there is one, I know Carol's not on the call, but there is one councilwoman in Dunmore who every month comes up with something different that she doesn't like. Um, and then actually somewhat insulted us and our consultant at the last meeting by saying that they need to hire a professional to look this ordinance over.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, an expert. So it's our thoughts that when the new council comes in in Dunmore in January, that, that this may be a, an end to Sapa for them. That's what we're thinking. Um, we did have a meeting with Ted and EPD on Plan B. In other words, hopefully Scranton is still on board and once they do adopt it, that we're going to have to go back and reallocate the uses that Dunmore agreed to take, including the landfill, somewhere else. So, but you know, I'm not saying it's 100%, but the, but the feelings we're getting is that's where it's headed.
Well, I certainly hope that someone explains to Dunmore all the money that was put into this and all the time and effort and, you know, and reemphasize that and the fact that they have to provide for every use on their own, you know? And they don't get priority consideration for grants anymore.
Right. And it's unfortunate, the last meeting that I actually attended and um, I think, Steve, were you there too? When she brought up the setbacks? She had mentioned, th- this is the particular councilwoman had mentioned that the setbacks were changed. And we didn't think they were, but Jill Lorenz was working with EPD on it. So we couldn't answer and Jill wasn't at the meeting. So then she accused, you know, accused us of changing the setbacks and when we went back and actually looked at the ordinance, the next day, nothing was changed.
Yeah, we were, we were basically ambushed.
Yeah, and this is what, what this person does every month. Yeah. So basically Brenda has said that we're not going back to any of their meetings. No, we're done. We're done with the insults.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
Till they're on their own.
We had, between Mary Liz and myself, we attended probably a half dozen meetings in Dunmore. And this person was never at any meeting, never asked us any questions, never sent us any emails. She just would ambush us at the meetings.
Wow.
Is it councilwoman?
Yes.
Shame.
They have a change?
And it's not Carol. It's not Carol.
No, she's been on board in the fair.
I know. Carol, Carol is just horrified. We're absolutely horrified.
I could imagine.
Yep.
She can't talk any sense into them?
We've tried. Brenda's tried talking to the solicitor, tried talking to a few council people that she knows and they're all, they're all on board. They want to do this, though they're good. And then every time it comes to a meeting, they agree, they, they just let her do what she wants and then they, they vote the same way she votes.
Wow.
Table at 7:00 every time.
Yeah, they've tabled it since May.
Does, does Donnie have an update for you in Scranton or any?
I can give you, Terry, I can give the board an update.
Thanks, John.
It was on our planning, we did have a planning commission meeting last Wednesday, a virtual planning commission meeting. It was on the agenda. Donnie gave the commissioners an update, basically saying he's still going through Scranton's version and he's he's kind of tweaking some things to fit things that have been causing issues in the past, like specifically in Scranton and making sure it's clear. Uh, he told the board uh, that their next step would be a recommendation to council, the council would have the public hearing. So it's, he, the timeline he set was basically, he hopes to do it by the end of the year.
That'd be good.
I mean, he's, to be honest, you know, he goes, he says, I sit down, I keep going through and I, and I see things that, and I'm just tweaking it, a place here and there, you know what I'm saying? It's that, he goes, because there were like kind of issues in the past and we can clear it up in the ordinance, you know what I'm saying? Allowing for some things to be permitted that were kind of variance things and vice versa, you know?
Right, yeah. Well, hopefully he'll get that done and because they, you know, if they have to, you know, go back and amend those little tweaks later on, they can, they can do that, but we need to get moving on this.
Yeah, I mean, it's perfectly fine. I mean, I, I was never under the impression that Scranton was going to back out of this and I realized.
The commission is waiting to entertain it. They seem eager to entertain it, so I don't think it's going to be an issue.
Well, yeah, it's just that if we get Scranton on board, then, then, then we know for sure one way or the other what Dunmore is going to do. If they're waiting on Scranton and Scranton does it and they still don't, then, then we got to move forward, you know?
Right, because it's coming up on a year. Clark Summit was the first municipality to adopt it, which was December of last year. So we're, you know, the other seven are getting a little antsy. Um, and there's a few, a few that are, that have gotten some developments coming in that, that they don't even know how to, like, they have a meeting with our solicitor to say that they still need to follow that old ordinance.
Yeah, right.
It will cause all kinds of problems if they try to do the new one.
Sure.
So.
Yep, yep. That's a shame.
John, if you could keep pushing Donnie, that'd be great. Now, I, I can see with the new council, you know, until January or February to do this, uh, doesn't matter. Uh, they get a, they, they approve it, push it more even.
Yeah.
There aren't that many uses that Dunmore is, is taking exclusively. I mean, I mean, they could be allocated elsewhere. The, the big one's going to be the landfill.
Right.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
And I mean, and they can't make this landfill go away. Right, they've got it. And if they pull out a Sapa, they have to still provide for it, plus all these other uses that they.
Right.
They were sharing.
Right. Yep.
You gotta remember, Donnie is the acting zoning officer too, which now he's involved in building permits, zoning.
Right, right.
He's also involved in the planning, plus.
Yep.
He's, he's, he's like one of the go-to guys in the whole city. If they can't find an answer, they go to Donnie or me. I mean, it's kind of like that the way it works. So.
Oh, yeah.
Because of our longevity there. So, you know, he's, his time is, he's, he's really stretched. He's so thin, he's like God, you know what I'm saying? It's, it's bad. And uh, but, you know, he's, you, you know, y'all know him, he's due diligence, he's going to get it done.
Without a doubt. And we know he's been under a lot of pressure and has, wears a lot of hats and you understand that.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and the last note on Sapa is we did get the final reimbursement from the state, so that, actually the grant's closed out. So EPD is working on the goodness of their heart because their contract is up as well, but they're, you know, they want to see this project finished, so they would really just be dealing with Scranton now, well and Dunmore.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure they'll come up with something else to change.
Yeah, right.
Let's, uh, let's hope it works out. Okay. Um, let's move on. Rail service.
Uh, Scranton New York Rail, really, we haven't had any meetings. There have been no updates, but uh, you saw, President was in Scranton last, or two weeks ago. Um, the Amtrak representatives are also at that meeting and they are pushing for the infrastructure bill. And if that goes through, we're right on top of the pile for resumption of rail service. Uh, we still have the money to do the studies that need to be done, so we're, you know, we're ready to go. It's just waiting on the infrastructure bill. Uh, hazard mitigation, there?
Okay, so it says no change, but actually there's been a little bit of activity going on with this. Um, all 40 of the municipalities have adopted the plan. FEMA has accepted 38 of them. Okay, now, Tony, if you could please remind Gary, I still need North Abingtons. I've emailed him a few times. They, I have to get that resolution to FEMA so they acknowledge that they're on board. Um, Old Forge, again, I think we brought this up, they adopted it, but they didn't participate and FEMA would not accept it. So they have actually um, completed all their questionnaires. We have a letter ready to go to FEMA for the amendment. Uh, Vision Planning has made the amendment. We're just waiting on Old Forge's letter, basically explaining why they want to be in the plan and why they didn't participate. So we could send all this paperwork to FEMA to hopefully get that resolved. Um, in the meantime, with that now, there's been some COVID funding allocated to the Hazard Mitigation Program uh, in this, in light of $70 million to FEMA. Um, with no local match requirement. So they have suggested, even though we've just updated our plan to start the process to apply for more funding for the next round. Um, there, of course, they're, they're, they're revising all of the counties in the state to do something. So um, they said that because of the funding opportunity, we could put in for a little bit more in-depth planning for the next phase. So we did go, we did meet with um, Vision Planning. We went through some ideas and we did put a letter of intent in to apply for $265,000 uh, for the next round to update the plan, which would include equity, man-made technological hazards, uh, COVID impact and the annual reports as well as the five-year update. Um, the grant to apply would actually be um, January of next year. And then by the time we hear back from FEMA, it would be later in the year and then it would be a, almost a three-year contract. So by the time that contract period comes to an end, it's the time for the five-year planned anyhow. So at least we, we won't be in a rush like we were this time. We'll have at least two years to, to work on this.
Yeah. Any questions on hazard mitigation? Let's move on to our question.
Uh, that has been approved by DEP and I just got an email from the Conservation District. They have put in applications for almost a million dollars in funding for different um, projects related to the Chesapeake Basin, repairing buffers and channel restorations and projects like that. So that's
good.
moving along.
Good, good, good. Rosemary, I, I heard you have to run at 11 o'clock, but I want to thank you for uh, tuning in today. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome, Harry. I just sent it, I just sent a text to Jerry to ask if she's going to be joining the call because you need a quorum to approve the development projects, correct?
Yes, yeah, we will.
Okay.
Unless we can, can we get a, a vote right now?
We have five.
We have five, we have, we have six.
Oh, we still, oh, yeah, one, two, three.
So you have a quorum without me for the vote?
Yes, yes, we do.
Otherwise, I'd give you my vote now, having, having reviewed.
Good, good. Nope, we're good.
Documents, okay.
Fantastic. Rose, you can leave whenever you need to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, tell us about APA.
Okay, um, a couple of things. Uh, APA, Mary Liz and I represented the chapter uh, in presenting a Great Places Award to Lackawanna Heritage Valley for the trail system. There was a statewide competition and they were chosen along with three other entities across the Commonwealth. So Mary Liz and I went up and made the presentation. Uh, there's some nice coverage in the newspaper on it. Um, also, we went to Pittsburgh for the annual PPA conference. Um, attendance was down a little bit from previous years, pre-COVID, but it was still pretty well attended. Um, I presented on the comprehensive plan and the long-range transportation plan along with Luzerne County, uh, Ted Ritzick's from DCED and our consultants. Um, our session had about 40 people in it, which was a, a good turnout. Um, the conference itself had a lot of different sessions in it. Um, I was basically on the transportation track. Mary Liz was in and out of transportation and land use. Um, and also uh, I presented at the Pennsylvania Trails and Greenways Conference in Erie back in September um, with our consultants and with Chris Chapman on the bike study. Uh, at that conference, there was about 250 people there and our session, we wound up with about uh, 15 or 20 people in the session, which was again, a good turnout. And uh, I actually gave my notes for the presentation to the planner for Erie County because they're looking at doing something similar. So, uh, as I said, the two conferences went well. Yeah, I don't know if you have anything you wanted to add about PPA?
Uh, no, it was, um, like I said, I was surprised it was well-attended, well-organized, the facilities. I really liked that facility there, Station Square. Um, the Steelers were playing the first night. We got, you could actually see the Jumbotron from my hotel room.
Oh, wow.
Uh, Cindy, that, that, they said that masks were going to be required, but guess what?
They weren't.
Yeah, no. So maybe it was a good thing that you didn't go, but.
Yeah, yeah, you know. Well.
Somehow Jay Shekman from Luzerne County, who used to be from Lackawanna, also was there. And he got a room on the top floor. He could actually see the field from his room.
Oh, wow. That's pretty cool. Wow. Oh, great. Hey, was, did Denny Pukko attend? Was he given an award?
Yes, he did get the award, yes.
Good, good.
It was very emotional for him.
Oh, I bet, yeah. I'm gonna have to email him. Good.
And West Grant and Neighborhood, uh, they got the, a, a, a planning award too.
Good, good. I know. We started that before I retired with them and uh, but I'm glad it's moved forward.
Um, what's his name from Neighbor Works was there to accept it?
Jesse, Jesse.
Not Jesse, the other guy. What's his name?
Todd.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Todd's on our planning commission. He's a good guy.
Yeah, okay.
Good work. Good work. Let's move on to development reviews.
Okay, going back to the October reviews, uh, just a couple to, to go over. Um, on page 35, Triborough Industrial Park. This is the Big Industrial Park in Oliphant Troop, a part of Jessup. Uh, they revised their plans. Originally, they came in with five structures uh, from 900,000 to 1.2 million square feet. They revised their plans now for um, four structures, all about a million square feet. Um, in the September review, we had a number of comments for them to address. Um, some of them have been addressed. Uh, we're waiting to see if they get to the rest of them. Um, on page 37, Abmont in South Abington. This is a conversion of an existing building and an expansion. Uh, the expansion would be 1,200 square feet with existing 1,900 square foot building. Uh, on this one, I had to withhold making a recommendation because they didn't tell me anything. I don't know what the existing building was used for. I don't know what the, the future building, what the expansion is going to be used for, which then determines uh, parking and uh, some other requirements. Uh, there was no highway occupancy permit or notation on the plan. Uh, the plans weren't sealed by a surveyor. Um, they also showed numerous square footages of the existing building and not, and their documentation. Uh, their stormwater plan was different than the plans itself, the plan itself, which was different than the survey, which was different. So it was just a dog's breakfast. Um, so I did have to require or withhold a recommendation on that. And then uh, Mary Liz, Jefferson Zoning.
Yep, yep. There's a comprehensive replacement to the Jefferson Township zoning ordinance. Um, just some uh, comments that I, that I uh, highlighted. Um, the definition of agriculture didn't agree with what's in the MPC. I think that, that should be. Um, they were trying to exclude some types of agricultural operations, so I, I just pointed that out. They should keep it consistent with the MPC. Um, the tiny home, the definition for a tiny home was the range between 170 and 1,100 square feet. It's kind of generous because there are mobile homes that are actually, you know, around 1,000, even, even stick-built homes. Um, so there is a definition that I provided them that, that came from the Lancaster County Planning Office. That's a model ordinance for tiny homes that they should um, stick with something like that because there, it, it's a sticky wiki between them. It's not an RV. And it's not, it's not fall, doesn't fall under the UCC, so it's, it's kind of in the middle there. So they need to be careful on uh, what exactly is a tiny home. Um, and then, then they should also provide the recreational vehicle definition to differentiate that from the tiny home. Um, they had a C3 zoning district listed in the ordinance with the, while the land uses and setbacks and everything, but no C3 on the map. Um, private shooting ranges, that's something just, just came out of Commonwealth Court where you basically have to allow them everywhere. But you could put restrictions on them like lot size setbacks, things like that. Um, they were only, actually, they didn't even allow, they didn't even mention it at all. So they probably should put something in there because that may be coming down the pike. Um, the warehousing again on the parking, um, you know, with the, with the larger buildings and the less employees to have to have all that parking is kind of, you know, excessive. Um, and then a comment again on the sign regulations and the, the content neutral that the US Supreme Court uh, ruled on a few years ago that they can't differentiate between business signs, political signs, this kind of sign, that kind of sign. It just has to be by the zone district and, and like sizes and materials and locations and things like that. So that was that.
Yeah, the uh, shooting range one is going to be interesting. How do you allow a shooting range in an R1 zone in the city of Scranton?
Yeah, yeah. The, the only thing with that is that they have appealed it to the State Supreme Court and the State Supreme Court has accepted the appeal. So the makeup of the State Supreme Court is a little different than the Commonwealth Court, so we're waiting to see what happens with this. And that this week, this was discussed at the PPA under the land use law update session. You brought that up. Basically, the judge that made, that uh, he actually just won elevation to the same State Supreme Court. Robson, was that his name?
Yeah.
He, he was the one that made the decision or wrote the uh, the opinion on this in Commonwealth Court that he basically said that you should treat personal shooting ranges the same as if people were washing their cars in their driveway. I have the right to wash my car in my driveway. I have the right to fire off a firearm if I want.
Wow.
In my driveway.
Yeah, yeah, in my, on my property.
Does the noise, does the noise, can the, kind of noise ordinance then supersede that?
I don't know.
You know?
I don't know.
Wow.
I don't know.
He's a piece of work, that guy.
Unbelievable. Wow. Okay. How about development reviews, November?
Uh, November, Mary Liz, uh, page 17, Holly Ridge Station in Old Forge.
Yeah, this was actually uh, submitted and approved by Old Forge back in 2010. We actually. Yeah, this was actually, uh, submitted and approved by Old Forge back in 2010. We actually viewed it. It was called Misty Ridge back then.
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
Nothing's changed except it's five-year period for, under the MPC has, you know, come and gone. So they had to resubmit. Um, like I said, exact, it was basically the same plan with, with, under a new name. Um, the only comments I had were, the comments of our original review had a lot of variances listed and they did get all those variances from this, uh, from Old Forge. Um, the only thing I didn't get again was the water letter. Um, and then the floodplain area, trying to compare it with the new maps, it looks like the floodplain area has changed somewhat. Um, it was hard to tell if they were using the new floodplain maps or the old ones. And they will need to revise that with the new floodplain maps. And that was pretty much it.
Across the street from Lonesome Road?
This is off of, um,
Bridge Street?
Bridge Street. Yeah. At the end of Howard and Ford and it's right along the river. For a good part of it.
And then they had some environmental issues there years ago?
Probably.
Huh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Continue.
Okay. And finally, page 2122, Acadia Geisinger Behavioral Health. This was a revised plan. Um, they have met all of the conditions and revised, uh, what we had asked them to. Uh, the big thing was on the number of off-street parking. Uh, we thought it was excessive under the ordinance with what they were proposing. However, they submitted, uh, parking studies that they've done at other facilities, both their own and some other types of facilities that are similar, showing that the parking is within the standards that, uh, are being followed in these other areas. So, um, we did recommend approval of it based on their, their parking study. But we did, um, maintain our original request that they look at more infiltration uh, in their parking islands and things like that. So that's something that they can easily adjust. So we are recommending approval. And that's it for the, uh, development reviews.
I have a question. Uh, the, the Holly Ridge, it's nothing, you said there was variances granted. Is there a timetable on variances? Like, like with the, with, with, when you prove like the Saldau, they have five years to build and finish construction.
Correct, right.
I know a ver, I know there's an appeal period of 30 days with a zoning decision. And then, and then if it's not appealed, I think, is it one year they have to enact the construction or am I?
I don't think so. I think whatever is written in the, in the actual variant language. And if they don't put any time limit or restrictions on it.
Goes with the property then. Okay.
Yep.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And just to, uh, let you know, as of the end of November, or you know, uh, the beginning of November, I should say, to this meeting, uh, we've done 145 reviews so far this year. Um, which is a little bit above the last couple of years, but, uh, below pre-COVID, uh, timeframe.
Anybody have any questions on any of the development reviews?
Uh, just something real quick, Harry. I, can you hear me? Could you guys hear me?
Gotcha.
Good. I, 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 uh, opted out of the Zoom meeting. I had to call in again because I, I wasn't getting through for some reason. But in the, um, in the October agenda on page 16, I do believe that there is a gas line. Um, for that, uh, Verastro subdivision. It does come down Mundro Road and it goes, uh, in, in fact, I think it's marked. There's a home. Now whether it stretches to this lot, I don't know how big this lot is, how far it goes up Mundro Road. The, the line does not go down Leighton Road or, or SR, uh, 1027, but it does come down Mundro Road to a distance, uh, close to SR 1027. Um, that was the only comment I, I did have.
Okay. And that probably wasn't noted on the plan. And then we just basically, we just basically fill that information out for in-house. And, you know, just for in-house reference. So.
Right.
Yep.
Understood.
Yeah. And some of those rural areas, it's hard to tell if there's actually gas lines in some of the areas. Most of them there aren't. So.
Yeah. Is that a distribution line or is it an actual service line?
It, it's a, it's a distribution line. It's not a transmission line. It's a distribution line. It, it comes down Fairview Road, crosses 347 and goes down Mundro Road to a distance within the intersection at, at 1027 or Leighton Road.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Sure.
He, he does read.
I do.
Check them all. Anybody have any other comments on our development reviews? Entertain a motion to approve our, uh, uh, let's say, I guess the September reviews?
October.
Yeah, the October review.
October.
I'll make that motion. Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Cindy. All in favor?
Aye.
And how about our November reviews?
Harry, just for the record, uh, I see there's a Lobella review in, and I think I actually sealed that drawing because I'm the surveyor of record again for the company. So, uh, I'll, I'll abstain on the one. If there's any other Lobellos in the October, but I just happen to pick out that Verastro one right now. Okay? Just let it be known.
I'll make sure they note that, John. Thanks. Good. How about, uh, any, uh, a motion to approve our November, um, development reviews?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Tony. Second?
Sec, second.
Thank you, Chad. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I don't think there's any Lobellos in November, so I'll back out. Okay.
Good, good. Uh, is there any other business? The commission members want to discuss. No public comment? How about a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn, before we adjourn, I just have a, a question. Just Steve and Mary, Steve and Mary Liz, can I call you on a, as, as the chairman of the, uh, Blakely Borough Planning Commission, I have two questions, uh, and I spoke to the borough manager yesterday. Can I just call you? It's only a five-minute phone call.
Sure.
Sure.
You got a number? I'll, I'll call you both.
You can call them anytime, Chad.
Okay.
I'll give you mine. 963.
Okay.
6400. And my extension is 1354.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Guys, thank you so much for taking time out of your busy days. Have a wonderful day.
Motion to adjourn.
See you in December. Yes, motion to adjourn. I moved a second.
Yes.
I'll second. Thanks. Thank you. Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving.